Hello and welcome back to the Wokes Bear Connect Podcast, brought to you by Park Multimedia. The Wokes Bear Connect Podcast is a series that brings in local entrepreneurs, council leaders, young professionals and students that are leaving their mark on Northeast Pennsylvania. I'm your host, Dan Kimbrough. All right, well, I want to thank all those who are listening and those who are here in the audience as well today. You are tuned into the Wokes Bear Connect Podcast. I'm your host, Dan Kimbrough, and this is a special episode where we are working with the Wyoming Valley Chamber to dedicate some of these episodes to different parts of the councils. And this is on behalf of the Young Professionals Council. And so we're talking today with Kendra Vogh of the Luzerne County Council. You're the chair, correct?
Yep.
And then we have Max Conaway, who's the mayor of Dunmore Borough. And so we're talking today about some of the changes in the communities, but thinking about ways of advocacy and how youth can get involved in helping out local politics and elected officials. And so first of all, I want to begin, we'll start down with Max. If you could just tell us a little bit about yourself, your background, how you got into politics?
Yeah, so I was elected in January of 2022, or I was in, I was put in office in January. I ran totally a grassroots campaign. I ran against the former mayor of Dunmore, who was the mayor for pretty much my entire life. He was mayor for twenty-some years. So that was a big undertaking. But first got my start into politics. I went to Temple University down in Philadelphia. After that, I was, I worked for Senator Bob Casey for two years. I was his driver. So that was a really fun experience working with him. He's, he's a great guy. Then I worked on a couple of campaigns throughout the country. I ran the Finance Department for a race in California, one in New Jersey, and one in Philadelphia, the district attorney's race. So after I did that, I, I kind of wanted a break from politics. So I got into real estate. That's my full-time job right now. And again, being, so I'm in real estate, I'm also the mayor. So that's kind of, that's kind of how I, I started to get involved early. Took a break and now I'm, I'm back into it.
Very cool. Thank you for that. Kendra?
Yeah, sure. So I grew up in Luzerne County in Exeter. I went to Wyoming area. I never really left the county because then I went to Wokes University. I got my degree in political science. I've always known I wanted to get involved into politics. I just never knew in what capacity. I just knew that I wanted to help this area. When I was in high school, when I told my guidance counselors I wanted to major in political science, they said, oh, unless you leave here, you know, you can't really be successful in that. I wanted to prove them wrong. So in 2019, so I started running in 2018 for Luzerne County Council. No real backing of any big political parties. I just knew I wanted to run. I wanted to make a difference. People looked at me and they were like, oh, that's the good old boys club. Like you can't really do anything there. And I was like, I'll prove you wrong again. So not really having a ton of money to run, not really having backing from, you know, a, a big party background. I ran for county council and I went from both ends of the county, just knocking on doors, trying to get votes, going to events in the community, just trying to get my name out there and explain that I just wanted to help. Like I didn't want this to be the place you, I was raised in Luzerne County. I want it to be the place where you were raised and you stayed and you worked and you raised your family. And, and that was always just really important to me. So I got elected. I took office in January 2019. My first two years, you know, I was doing as best I can, learning what was going on in the county that I didn't know about, making connections. And then for the last two years, I've been the chair of Luzerne County Council. In addition, my full-time job is with United Way of Wyoming Valley, which is really neat because I get to help on Luzerne County Council in a, in a political type of way and help our area that way. But then with my full-time job at United Way, I also get to help members of our community as well.
And now you both, in talking about sort of how you got started in politics, mentioned that very young, you knew that this is something you were going to do and that you'd been, you were driving for Senator Casey. You, in high school, knew that you were going to go into political science. What was it in you, or was there somebody who influenced you that early on, you knew that this was sort of the work that you wanted to be doing? Either one of you?
Okay, sure. So I don't think it was anyone particular who influenced me. I don't know where it came from. My family says that all the time because they've never been like really involved in politics or anything like that. I was in fourth grade and I wrote an essay about how I wanted to be the majority whip of the Senate when I grew up. Yeah. And I tell everybody, like I joke, because House of Cards came out and now everybody knows what that is, but I knew about it when I was quite young. I just knew I wanted to help and I didn't know. And, you know, I've learned and I'm sure Max sees the same thing. Like you don't realize the political hoops you jump through, even majoring in politics, political science in college. You learn how things work and how government works and how to network and, you know, the inner workings of it. But I don't think you really realize what goes on in politics and you think you can get things done. But just jumping through those political hoops and who's taking this side and voting one way just because of a party or who they know or who backed them in their campaign. It's been a crazy learning experience. So while yes, you can try to do your best to help, but there are so many crazy political hoops to jump through that I never would have known until I actually got involved in, in politics.
Yeah, when I was in high school, I think I was, my freshman year, I ran for, I don't know, like Secretary of the Class, and I lost by one vote. And it was because my cousin, Ally, was mad at me that day. Voted for the woman who beat me. So I lost by one vote. I still hold that overhead today. But when I worked for Senator Casey, it, it showed me, like I graduated from college, same thing, political science degree, didn't really know what I wanted to do. Like most people, they graduate college. Some people know immediately, like this is what I want to do. I wasn't sure. Then when I worked for, for Casey, it was like, okay, this is a really, this is really cool what he does. He's, he's super into the community. He actually cares. So when I got to see that up close, because we literally drive from Scranton to Erie, Pennsylvania, and he doesn't listen to music. He doesn't do anything. He just sits there and he works the entire car ride. So when you're picking him up at 5:00 AM and you're driving to Erie in dead silence, it's a little bit tough. But just to see like that kind of commitment was really cool. I got to go to DC a bunch to work with him there. But then, as I progressed, it's funny, like you work with some politicians that are super community oriented, actually have their constituents' best thoughts in mind. Then you work with some who I've worked for where you're like, oh, my God, how did this person get to where they are? Because they, they're out for themselves. So it could really jade you in a, in a super negative way. But that was kind of my, my political, you know, mentors, Bob Casey, I really think. The way he does it is like, that's how it needs to be done. That's how it should be done.
Very cool. Thank you both for sharing that. And I asked that question, so because, you know, think about young professionals and people who are interested, what advice do you have for people who maybe don't think that they can get involved? They've heard that I can't make a difference. Are those things? What advice do you have to young individuals who are thinking about advocacy, maybe not running for elected office, but just the idea of advocacy and standing up for themselves and their community? What advice would you give people who maybe are running up into some different barriers or burdens?
So that was something I heard a lot is maybe if, when I was knocking on people's doors, maybe if you were a couple of years older, maybe once you get a couple more years experience, then I could support you. But being this young, like what do you really know about the community? And I made an effort to really get myself involved in the community and in Luzerne County well before I ever decided to run for politics and I, for county council. And I think that's something young people can do even in high school or even maybe earlier. So we have so many events, so many things that go on in Luzerne County, so many boards, commissions, even just meetings. So, you know, I, I grew up in Exeter. They have a council meeting once a month. All of the boroughs and municipalities in Luzerne County typically do have a council meeting. If you see something you want to change, if it's the pothole outside your house by the stop sign and you want to talk about it, go to a meeting and talk about it. Or even just go and listen and see what's going on in your community. And then, you know, on the larger scale, we have the county council meetings. We have them every other Tuesday. So they, they happen a lot. And we have a lot of boards, we call them the ABCs. They're the authorities, boards and commissions, that members of the public can just volunteer on. And some of them meet, you know, once a month, some of them meet once a quarter. Some of them are doing big projects. Some, if you don't have a lot of time, aren't really doing projects. They're just meeting to keep things afloat. So I think that's a good way to get involved. And then also, people only come to county council meetings if they have a huge problem, right? They don't come to say, like, I just came today to see what's going on in Luzerne County. They come when there's something that they're upset about, right? So a lot of people don't really know what we're doing and what we're talking about unless the paper writes about it, or if they come to meetings. So I think coming to meetings and seeing what's going on in our community is so important. A lot of times we highlight events that are going on in the county, or you'll see things that we're voting on. People love to talk about how we voted or why we did something. But we have a lot of discussion too, right? So you can see where we're all coming from and how we come together or don't come together to vote a certain way. So I think coming to meetings, going to events, just seeing what the needs are in the community. We, we're lucky here too. We have a lot of local nonprofits for anyone who wants to get involved. If you like, if you want to get involved with children, pets, the elderly, we have, even for a small community, we have a large array of ways to get involved that way as well.
Thank you. Cool. Nice.
I think a, a big problem with folks that want to get involved is they don't want to be, from what I've seen anyway, they don't want to be running because they don't want to put themselves out there. They don't want to, they'd rather be behind the scenes, which is great because nothing helps me more, being that, you know, I have a full-time job, but I'm also the mayor. But if somebody comes to me and they say like, how can I help? Like, what can I do? And if somebody comes to me and says, I can write a grant for, you know, new, new, new streetlights or something like that, like that's incredibly helpful. And again, like you don't have to put yourself totally out there. And then something we did in Dunmore, we started a, a 501(c)(6) organization. It's a, it's a business group. So the Dunmore Business Association is what we started. And it's been a great way to get a lot of our younger business owners in the, in the borough, more involved in the community. Because it's not like they're the ones that are out in the forefront. It's, it's more of a group effort now. So we're able to apply for grants, not through the state, but now that we're an official nonprofit, we can go for grants through different, like family foundations and things like that. So that's one way I think younger people can get involved is kind of just going and saying, how can I, like, what can I offer? Like, how can I help? Like, things like that. So that's been, that's been really helpful for me.
All right. And I think it's really cool to say that, to hear that from the both of you, that there are opportunities that you don't have to be the face of a project, or that you don't have to be the elected official. You can still be involved and be in the background. I think you're right. For a lot of people, the idea of stepping up and now I have to be the face of something, that's a bit much, especially if you haven't done it before. But there are those opportunities. Could you talk about the ABCs, what you call those committees? So you're saying that you can be on these boards as just a regular citizen? You don't have to have any background in elections or all those things and still help make decisions about what's happening in the county?
Yeah, that's completely correct. You can just be, now, some boards do require you to have a certain degree, like, you know, we sometimes look for, for the farming board. Like somebody has to have like a degree in some side of conservation or things like that. So for things like that. But the arena board, our county cares commission, which is a lot of community service projects, you can just be a member of the community. Even the county just got a grant for opioid funding and what's going on in the county with that, just to help and, and kind of see where things need to go and where the money needs to go. So we just created a board and there's a spot for a citizen on that board as well. So another thing too, is you had mentioned that they, you know, young professionals getting involved don't have to be the face. And that is completely true. You definitely can be super valuable, if not more valuable, with what you do behind the scenes. But I also think a lot of what was said to me is that, oh, wait a couple of years, maybe in a few years, maybe once you have more experience. And I just want young professionals to know that's not necessarily the case. Just because you're young, that shouldn't hold you back. If you want to be the face of something, then you totally belong in that room. You belong there. You should go for it. Because I think just that advice of just waiting a couple of years, politics, getting involved in the community, there's no succession plan, right? And in a lot of the rooms I'm in, I'm, I'm surrounded by older men, right? So to be a young woman in a room, I'm, I'm outnumbered. So getting more young people involved can only be good. Fresh set of eyes, for sure.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
And I do think that the only way to really learn this stuff is to do it. Like, again, I had a political science degree. And when you're, when you get that degree, you're learning about, you know, international policy. Well, that really does not help me at all in my job as a mayor. If somebody's garbage isn't getting collected, my knowledge of Middle Eastern politics does me no good. So it really is like, if you just kind of, you know, jump in, that's the, the best way to learn. So I think what she said is totally accurate.
Very cool. A lot of communities are changing, whether it's demographics, whether it's aging, people aging out of businesses and, and younger people moving in. You've got people, immigration as far as people coming into the city and to our cities as well. What challenges and opportunities specifically, you know, the both of them, do you see our region dealing with over the next three to five years? And, and with that, how can young individuals help alleviate some of the, the challenges and help, you know, sort of moving us towards opportunities?
I could start. Well, I'll just, again, talk about it from, from my point of view, being in real estate. I think housing is a, is a major problem. In Dunmore, and I see it pretty much everywhere in the Northeast, we have a ton of out-of-state buyers that are buying up, you know, single-family homes, multifamily homes. And a lot of times, they don't, they don't care about the quality of the housing. So if, if you're moving to this area and, and let's say you're, you know, you're not making a ton of money, your options are going to be limited on what you can and can't rent or buy. And a lot of times, I hate to call them slum lords, but they are. And a lot of times, these younger families that are moving into the area have, have no choice but to rent from these, these slum lords. So what we're trying to do in Dunmore, and I know a bunch of other communities have already done it, is, you know, create some sort of rental registration, some sort of rental program where the borough is able to, you know, every couple of years, check the quality of the housing so that people, you know, aren't running extension cords all throughout the house, which creates, you know, major fire hazards. So that's something that we're trying to be more proactive about in the borough. I know Scranton just totally revamped their registration. But housing, I know, is a major problem up here. And I think if we can somehow alleviate that, it would be super helpful for more young people to move here because they're going to want to be here if the housing is good.
And so depending on that, what, what ways do you, in that, that there's an answer to this question? So, but how can young people help with that? Or is there even a way that they can help? Because you're right, if we have people from the outside that are moving in, but we're up against a fence of people moving out of college housing, and we want them to stay, but we're admitting, we don't have a place for you to go that you can afford. And so how do we bridge that gap? Or what, what ways can we get our youth involved and young professionals to help solve that problem, or at least start thinking about that problem?
So I agree, the lack of affordable housing, because there's this huge push for bringing jobs in, bringing jobs in. And we did that. We're still doing that, which is phenomenal. And we want to continue to do that. And county council does that in a way. We try to give Koz's or LURDA's, different forms of tax breaks to developers and businesses that are coming in. But I think just advocating for our area, whether it's with state and federal legislators, we need affordable housing here. And I think trying to get grants, even just talking about the issue wherever you go, just talking about what's going on here, right? Because it's a great thing that we have all of these jobs. And we, for a while, we had lower-paying jobs. We're like, how do we keep the college kids here? Because we have so many great universities surrounding us, really. And, you know, how do we keep them here? So now we're even focusing on getting higher-paying jobs here, but we still have a lack of housing. So I think just advocating for this area, you know, if, speaking, when, when our developers come in, the big developers, like, they come in to pitch these ideas for big projects to bring jobs here. You know, we're the first ones to tell them, hey, yeah, this is great that you're bringing these jobs here. We want them here. But we also need developers to come in to help us with affordable housing. So I think that side of things, and then as well as like the legislators, just kind of letting them know that we need funding to, to create affordable housing in our area.
Yeah. And I don't have an answer for the, you know, how to do that. I think that's a, that's a monster problem though. But I, I do think retaining our younger population that is here is, is critically important. And I'm one of seven kids, and I'm the only one that's still, we all grew up and were raised in Dunmore. I'm the only one that still lives here. They all moved to New York, Washington. One lives in Denver. And they don't want to be here because, you know, there's not a ton to do, you know, everywhere. So again, what we're trying to do in Dunmore is make our downtown more like, like Pittston, like what, with what Mayor Lombardo has done down there. You go down to Pittston, it's, you want to get like a world-class meal, you can get that down there. You want to do shopping, you could do that there. So I think trying to mimic what he's done is something that could be really helpful, trying to retain the young folks that we do have here.
And I think another way that young people get involved, you don't need to be involved in politics at all, or even super involved in the community to do this. The things that go on here, like shout about it, right? Like, we're right at the intersection of 80 and 81. Like, we can get to the Poconos, New York City, Philadelphia. We can get so many great places. If you want to see a rural area and you want to relax, you can get there so quickly, in a day, a beach, a day. This area is really great and up and coming. And we do have jobs and we do have, like, like Max said, I mean, we have areas like Pittston, even Wokes Bear is, is coming around. So many great businesses are coming here, places to eat, see shows. I mean, we have the, the casino here. We have the arena, the FM Kirby Center. We're-
We're getting a Wawa in Scranton.
I'd come just for that. Sometimes, do you ever drive on like just this weekend morning to go get a Wawa coffee? Because I totally do. So that'd be great.
As a transplant, I still don't understand the Wawa sheets debate, but-
My wife's from Philly, so I'm, we're team Wawa.
You talk about the, the idea that, of things to do. And so I'm going to put on my DEI cap on this one. A lot of the times I hear from students, especially those who are coming from outside the region, who are from diverse backgrounds and multicultural backgrounds, that while there are things to do, there aren't things that represent the new individuals who are moving here. Like, we have tons of places to go outside and go camping and hiking and do all those things. But a lot of the kids that are moving from New York City, they don't want to go camping and hiking. And there's not many things that we have in these communities that reach beyond what we've always done. Do you see opportunities? Or is there things in the work where we're, we're looking at, you know, these changing populations and going, yes, we have a great, like, Nipah has a humongous music scene, but if you're not into ska, punk, or heavy metal, we don't have a music scene. And so thinking of those things, and again, these aren't questions that you may have answers to, but, but thinking about, yes, we want youth to stay and we want to attract, but that's not a homogenous youth anymore. And so what are we doing and thinking about? How do we make the, the area attractive for those who are here already, who have come from the outside, who your family was from here and they've left? Well, imagine you're coming in from Philly, or you're coming in from New York, or pick a place. You go to school here for four years and it's, well, I don't want to stay there, though. Like, I got my education. There's nothing here. What are we doing to, to really promote the vibrancy? Because yes, those things exist, but there are so many other things that exist that almost fall by the wayside.
Sure. So I'm going to be totally honest. On Luzerne County Council, it's not something that's openly discussed. And that is, that is an issue. And we recognize that. And I think we're almost behind in a sense, just because, you know, you know, private businesses are looking at, hey, what are we doing for diversity? Like, what are we doing for the changing population? And I don't necessarily think that on a county council level, and that's not to say our administration's not looking at these things, because I do think they most likely are. But county council, I don't know if you guys are familiar with the makeup. We are a group of, as of the last election, we have ten Republicans, one Democrat, mostly males. There's no real representation from the Hazelton area, or at least not enough. It's, it's, we're looking at spending the money and how we're spending it. Now, I will say, when we were giving out the ARPA grants, the federal money, we did add a DEI, you know, stipulation to that. What, what, who are we giving our money to? And in what way are you using that for the diverse population? And, you know, to try to attract people to Luzerne County? How are you going to make Luzerne County better? And is there, you know, a diversity lens on that? Are you looking at those things? So we did ask that question. I think that was kind of a step in the right direction. But it's not really something, you know, we're discussing. We're talking about elections, ballot boxes, which we shouldn't even really be talking about. We have an election board for that, right? But we get bogged down in the politics, which I, I do my best to, right? Like, I, I met my husband on council. I'm Republican. He's a Democrat. We, we get along just fine, obviously. So I think, you know, him and I, and even like younger people, don't so much see that. They just want to benefit this area. But right now, the group on county council does just see politics. And that's what they look at. They look, are you an R? Are you a D? And, you know, I'm going to stay on my side of the line. And I don't think that's good for the diversity, or really any, any topic for our area. It's not a direction we should continue in. But unfortunately, that's what we get bogged down with. And we don't get to look at, you know, what's fun in the area? What are we doing? So not even, are we not reaching that? How are we serving our diverse population? We're not even looking for ways to, to help the population we currently have because we're so bogged down with politics. So I think that's another reason that young people should definitely get involved in politics, because these are things we could think about. And, you know, if there's only one or two people on council or sitting in a room, when you have a room full of people who are not focused on that, it's hard to be heard.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you for that. Thank you.
Yeah. It's hard to know what people want if they're not being, like communicating it to, to people that have, you know, some, some say in it. What we're trying to do in Dunmore is we have, I'm hopeful on Monday, I have a meeting to hopefully get the remainder of funds to do a, a full downtown revitalization plan. So we have an engineer and we have an architect. And part of what the architect does is she does a full canvas of the borough to find out what people want to see. Is it a pocket park? Is it, you know, better sidewalks? What, what are the important things to you? So I think that's a step in the right direction for us, is to see what people want. Because if it's up to me, like, my interests as a thirty-year-old are going to be different than somebody who's sixteen. I, we had a meeting on Tuesday, we have a mayor's meeting with all, a bunch of the mayors from northeastern PA, which is great. I think Paige and Mayor Brown started that down in Wokes Bear. And Mayor Brown just told us that he, that they're opening up their first skate park. And I think that's something great for, for young kids that are, that are into that. Because again, it's, the, the interests are changing. And, and from what I hear, Dunmore has an older population. If I hear the word pickleball one more time, I'm going to scream. But that's what, that's what our population in Dunmore really wants. They want, they want pickleball courts. And that's, that's obviously not everybody's cup of tea. But that's what the feedback we're getting is. So I'm hopeful with this canvas of our community that some kids will respond and, and we'll find out, you know, what, what they want.
You're going to find out that kids want pickleballs, which you can find.
I'm going to just piggyback on what Max said quickly. So, right, he had mentioned he's a thirty-seven-year-old. Like, if you guys don't tell us what, what you want. And I'm the same way. We were talking a little bit before we started this podcast. I go to bed at nine. Like, I don't know what's going on after that. So come and advocate for yourself. Tell us what you want. And I, I'm happy to, to try to work on, you know, any good project, for sure.
And it doesn't even need to be in, in person. Ninety-five percent of the interactions I have are from, from Facebook or Instagram messages.
And that was actually one of my next questions is we, one of the overall themes that we keep hearing is just reach out to us. We just need to hear you. We, you know, tell us what you want. What are those best methods of actually reaching you? Not so much that it needs to be face-to-face, but so that even if it's just a response back of, hey, I heard you, can't do anything, but I heard you and we'll bring it up, you know? Like, what's the best way of sort of getting in front of people?
For me, it's, it's never been easier to reach your local politician, I feel like, because I have a, I have an Instagram account. I have a Facebook account. My cell phone is widely available, which people take advantage of. So I, I literally could not be easier. You could text me. But yeah, I would just, I would just, send me a message on Facebook. If I don't respond, ping me again. It's, it's really, but it's that step of people being like, well, they're either thinking, I don't want to be a pain in the ass, sorry, I don't want to be a pain. This is stupid. Like, so that, I think if people can get over that and just really put themselves out there and let us know, I, I think it would go a long way.
Yeah, I have all of the different social media accounts as well. I mean, even like Snapchat, people have messaged me like, hey, did you see this? Or I'll snap that I'm somewhere, you know, county-related. And, you know, they'll chime in. So, I mean, obviously email, but I don't know about you, Max, but I get upwards of probably a hundred and fifty emails to my county email a day and just fishing through what's, what's real, what's a real person, what's just a form that somebody filled out to spam our email boxes with what they, you know, their project or whatever. But I think reaching out to our emails, I love coming, I think coming to a meeting. We have our meetings virtually as well. Because if you come to a meeting, you're not just reaching one or two, you're reaching that entire board and a room full of a public too, who might say, hey, I really like that idea. I'm going to get behind it as well. So I think, you know, so socials for sure. And, and just coming to a meeting and of course, email.
And so it sounds like really you're open to community feedback and that you want to hear what your constituents actually want and what their issues are. And that it's working on that mindset of, no, no, we care. We actually do care and we want to hear from you. I appreciate hearing that. So that's really sort of all I have. I want to see if there's anyone in the room. Do you have any questions or anything? I know you did.
I'm down because I'm master-minded. But I hear you guys talking about how you want to retain the youth that are here coming for the university. We do have a lot of great universities surrounding Wokes Berry and Luzerne County area. I guess my question is, what do you think would be the best tactic? Because sometimes, I feel like, like you said, you have a room full of a lot of older white men who it's like, well, what do, and of course, we have you gracing their presence. But, but it's just like, I feel like a lot of, I can't speak for everybody, but I know some of the, like, what we hear as well, what am I going to go there? Like, are they going to really listen to me? Like, you're talking about how they're all focused on the politics and how that's a, a barrier in itself. So it's like, if I do take that time to come in there and show my face and share my questions and share my opinions, am I going to actually be heard? Or is it just going to be a space for me to feel like I'm, you know, being listened to? And on top of that, after you take that initiative step, and maybe at somebody or I, you know, someone takes that initiative to try and be on, you know, on the board, or tries to take a leadership position, it's like, I know that our generation, because of the views that we, that people have of our generation, it's like, oh, you guys are go-getters. Or you two, you take this initiative and you start what you want. But there's a lot of us that are so young and so burned out already, because it's like, how many things do I have to start to create space for myself? And then there's the other, like, part, other side of the very thin line where it's like, well, I see my friends who are going out and doing things and they're not seeing the, the change that they want to see in me. So it's just, there's a lot of discouragement and a lot of burn, like burning out that's happening in our generation. So like, how do you think we should combat that to try and, you know, find a space here? Because I do see, Erica tries to convince us all the time, you know, like, there's, there's something for you here. But then it's like, you know, we're trying to find that. So what, what would you suggest? Would we take the route, just keep persevering more?
Yeah. So my advice to that would be, yes, you will be heard if you come to a meeting and you speak. Um, we have the same 10, 15 people who talk at every single meeting about the same thing every time. Um, we hear them every time and we're, you know, we do what we can to, to address their issues. But I think a fresh face, um, you know, some, hearing something new, hearing something different than the same nuances. I've been hearing um, end the rain tax, which, which we cannot do as county council for the record. I've been hearing that for four years from the same, you know, 10 uh, guys that come to our meeting. So I think if you came with a good idea, we would 100% hear you. Now, as for your comment on, you know, the burnout, because we're trying to be so involved, I feel that for sure. Um, where are you going to find your people? Where are you going to find your niche? Like, um, where can I make the most difference? Um, and I think that is really just trial and error and being as involved as you can. And then just weeding things out that don't really make sense for you. Um, you know, attend a meeting. If it's not something that you're totally interested, you think that's great, but this isn't something I want to delve into. It's not how I can best dedicate my time. I think it's important to take a step back, right? Because I do the same thing. I want to be involved. I want to help everyone. When I have everybody, I'm like the biggest bleeding heart ever, which I don't know who put me in charge of United Way's money because I just want to help everyone. Um, but anyways, um, I, I think you just need to, you need to go, you need to find out what you're really passionate about. And then those things that you see other people that are involved in, but it's not on your, you know, top five, top three list. You have to trust those other people to get involved, maybe recommend it to a friend, but then take a step back, right? Because I feel the burnout, I feel wanting to be involved and wanting to help on every single issue all of the time. I get it. Um, but we can't, right? We're just, we're just one person, but we need to, to find our group. And I think, uh, you and I have met before at other events like this. Um, right? And we're out here doing the thing, like we're doing our best to try and all of these people here at this event and at the events in the circles that we run in are all trying to do that. So we also have to remember we're not just one person, although we can be um, in a room a lot of times with people who don't think like us. There are people out there who do want to help and there is a good group, um, you know, who does.
Not to be cheesy, but I know what you're saying. Like you go to a meeting and they may hear you, but are they like actually listening and taking into account what you're saying? I get that all the time when people come to our, our meetings. They may come in and say, we need to have brand new sidewalks all down, up and down Drinker Street, great idea. But you telling me that and, and me doing it are two very different things. I think it's a great idea. How do we do it? If you were to go to a meeting, and again, I don't know what your interests are or anything like that, but if you went to a meeting and say, you were able to kind of, you're super knowledgeable on the topic, knew exactly how to do it, that, that's something that would be incredibly helpful for, for somebody like me that you have, when you're in a position like, like we are, you have a million things going on, like the, you have DPW workers, you have police unions, you have fire unions, like that you're constantly dealing with. But if somebody came with a great idea and, and actually had the method of how to get something done, that would be absolutely incredible. Um, and I would 100% listen to that. Um, in terms of the burnout, if you figure that out, you can call me, let me know. Because it is, it is something like you, you beat your head against the wall, like you, you submit a grant for something that you think is so great. And you call and you call and they're like, when, what am I supposed to hear back? And they're like, well, you should hear back by next May. Like 10 months, like it's, it's something where it's just the patience is, it, it kills you. And then you get people that are calling you saying, what's the status? What's the status? And it's, it is like a total burnout, but um, it took me forever to find, I mean, I'm still not 100% of what I'm, will it, like what I want to do when I grow up, I guess, you know? So it is, it is something like finding your passions. Like I found real estate and I absolutely love it. Like it's a passion of mine. I found doing this is a really great passion of mine. We had our first kid, that's, she's taken up a ton of my time, but I love it. Uh, so it, it really does just take time and, and the burnout's going to come inevitably. And but if you could take a step back like she's saying, and just kind of figure out, you know, what you want and what's important, I think, again, that's, that's the way to do it.
Yeah. And you'll find, you'll find your people, you really will. It took me a long time. I'm still building my circle. I'm in the Leadership Northeast class this year. And I feel like even now, like you're, you just get to see so many people in this area and it's really hard to see, right? Uh, that there's other people like you that want to help, that want to make a difference, that want to be involved. But when you get in a room with people who are like you and want to see a difference and want to make this area great, it's like energizing, right? Um, and you'll, so you'll find that, you'll find those people for sure.
Where are the meetings held?
The Luzerne County meetings?
Yep. Our meetings are at the Luzerne County courthouse.
And then Dunmore, where are yours?
At our community center.
Community center?
Yep.
Yeah. I think in most municipalities, it's going to be at one of the municipal buildings. Um, but I think almost all boroughs, it's something like have a website of some sort. Yeah. So depending on what
I think you have to be a Dunmore resident. I think you have to be a Dunmore resident to
To attend, yeah. And so yeah, depending
You're more than welcome to come.
Yeah, yeah. But figure out which, you know, where you are, and then you can figure out where your meetings are um, online. What's that? Yeah. So yeah.
Yeah, come to the court. I, there's also, I'm pretty sure, which maybe I shouldn't say this because I'm not entirely sure. I think it's the League of Women Voters that put out um, like a packet at the beginning of every year. Um, and they'll say who your local legislators are, where their meetings are held, what day of the week of the month and things like that. And I'm pretty sure if you look it up, it's the League of Women Voters that does all of that information.
All right. Well, there are no other questions. I want to thank you all for being here today. I want to thank the two of you as well, uh, for joining us on this podcast. Again, I'm Dan Kimber. This is the Wilkes-Barre Connect Podcast. Have a great day. And that does it for this episode of the Wilkes-Barre Connect Podcast, brought to you by Park Multimedia. Wilkes-Barre Connect is powered by the Greater Wyoming Valley Chamber of Commerce. To learn more about Wilkes-Barre Connect, check out wyomingvalleychamber.org. That's wyomingvalleychamber.org.